I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker.
Here.
Mr. Corangelo.
Here.
Mrs. Chu.
Here.
Mr. Sizmar. Mrs. Gwass.
Here.
Mr. Hong.
Here.
Mrs. Reese. Mr. Winston.
Here.
And President Lacks.
Here. We have a quorum, please rise and salute the flag.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies of which any business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News and Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped for later broadcasts. It is the policy of the Board of Education that videotape meetings are not edited for any purpose. Individuals who speak to the Board's public meeting should be aware of these videotaping rules. Good evening and welcome. And we are going to start, as usual, with our superintendent's report this evening.
Thank you, President Lacks, and good evening, everyone. The artwork in the boardroom this evening reflects the efforts of the talented students at Lawrence Dorfer and Lawrence Brook Elementary Schools. Their teachers are Matilda Meto, Erica Goldberg, and Mary Ann Laird. Joe Sotary is the principal of Lawrence Dorfer, and Elizabeth Dunn is the principal at Lawrence Brook. This week, the annual Read Across America celebrations are taking place in all our elementary schools. Read Across America is an annual reading, motivation, and awareness program that calls for every child and every community to celebrate reading. As I participated at many schools, I saw our students enjoying author visits, guest readers from our administrative team, school board, municipal government, and community, and a true celebration of reading. Thank you to everyone who helped make this day special for our students. Today, CNN was at Central School to do an interview and video segment on our law enforcement against drugs, or also known as LEED program. The LEED program works to mitigate risk factors and promote healthy resiliency through social and emotional teaching. Drug and alcohol prevention is also an imperative part of health, wellness, and prevention programming for the Student Services Department. The East Brunswick Municipal Alliance for the Prevention of Drug and Alcohol Abuse has a longstanding working relationship with East Brunswick Public Schools, both supporting and facilitating programming to support this mission. Supervisor of Student Services Danielle Blaylock has been a member of this committee for over 12 years, where she has worked with Jennifer Stetson, Alliance Coordinator, as well as Community Policing Officer Reggie White. In 2018, these groups partnered to bring the LEED program to the district's fifth-grade classrooms. And we identified that early intervention, especially prior to the middle school years, is an effective time to stress the core values in the LEED curriculum. Program is evidence-based and taught by Officer Wright, who goes into each fifth-grade class throughout the year to deliver and inform positive relationships with the students in an effort to reduce risk-taking behaviors that could lead to future substance abuse. The National Merit Scholarship Program has now determined which of the 16,000 semifinalists named in September of 2021 have met the requirements to advance to finalist standing in the competition. Beginning in March and continuing through July, the National Merit Scholarship Corporation will notify scholarship winners. We wish each of our 16 finalists all the best as they enter the final stages of the competition. East Brunswick High School celebrated a tutu kindness event on 2/22/22. Everyone was encouraged to compete or complete "tu," meaning "T-U," a play on the word "two," acts of kindness, and then the high school shared their spirit and acts of kindness with elementary school students. Mr. Yanazza, the 12th-grade administrator, proudly sports his tutu. His class won penny wars and a senior award through sources of strength. He was very, very proud to be wearing that tutu as well. I think his daughter may have picked that out for him.
I'm guessing.
During the week of February 22nd, Lawrence Brook Elementary School participated in the school's annual multicultural celebration. Students engaged in a school-wide read aloud of the book, "Our Favorite Day of the Year." Students and their families shared information about their own cultures and traditions through class show and tells. All students participated in the Parade of Nations. For the Parade of Nations, students created pennants representing over 60 different countries. Each pennant included information about that country. And for this special and educational day, students were invited to wear clothing or colors that either represented the United States of America or another country or culture that they related to. Coming together as a school reinforced the important message that all students and families are welcome in our school community, and that sharing our cultural and family traditions with each other can help our students develop self-confidence, respect for each other, and of course, good citizenship. On February 24th, the Churchill Junior High School select and advanced orchestras, under the direction of Sarah Francino and Mary O'Mara, performed at the New Jersey Music Educators Association Annual State Conference in Atlantic City. Ensembles were selected for form at this conference based on a stringent application process that includes submitting a recording of the group. And congratulations to our artists for being selected to perform once again. The Bowman Row preschool celebrated their study of zoo animals with a parade around the building in February. Thanks to a grant from the East Brunswick Education Association, each student was provided with a stuffed animal and a book about the animal of their choice for the parade. The older students loved cheering on for their younger classmates. In sports, and we may have a few upper athletes in the audience tonight, too, JV girls' basketball won the annual Frank Knopfberger GMC JV Basketball Tournament. Varsity cheer took second place at the New Jersey Cheer and Dance State Championship. JV cheer won first place at the New Jersey Cheer and Dance State Championships, and they won in the small performance division as well. Congratulations to our February Athletes of the Month. Students were selected for this honor by the coaching staff based on performance, demonstration of leadership, effort in practice, and of course, for modeling exceptional character. The High School Drama Club presents Little Women: The Musical on Friday, March 11th, Saturday, March 12th, Friday, March 18th, and Saturday, March 19th, beginning at 7:00 p.m. On Sunday, March 13th, the performance will begin at 3:00 p.m. Tickets are available online at ebhsdrama.org. On Monday, March 21st, we will host our 13th Annual Night of Jazz, sponsored by the East Brunswick Education Foundation. The event will take place at the Joanne Magistro Performing Arts Center at Hammerhill Middle School and will begin at 6:30 p.m. Tickets can be purchased at the door. Registration for the East Brunswick Public Schools Summer Kindergarten Readiness and Summer Early Learning Academies is now open. There are three- and six-week programs available with both half-day and full-day options, running from June 27th to August 9th. Please visit ebnet.org/elasummer for more information and to enroll. And finally, the East Brunswick Education Foundation's Partner in Excellence Dinner will be held on Tuesday, April 5th, at the Pines Manor in Edison. The East Brunswick Education Foundation trustees will honor Dr. Trudy Atkins, Dr. Anna Braun, Lisa Citron, and David Lonsky Esquire. In addition, the EBF will be celebrating the Alumni Hall of Fame induction of Dr. Scott Gottlieb, former head of the FDA, and our own Olympian, Sam Mattis. For ticket information, please visit ebef.org. And that concludes my report for tonight. Thank you.
Oh, good stuff.
Yeah.
And I wanted to know in reading, I was actually, my age was guessed today. I had two good guesses. One was 700, and the other one was 34. Yeah. Same class, somewhere in between, exactly.
They guessed my age at 32.
Yes, well, because I told them that I, since I grew up here, I told them that I did that, so. It was pretty funny. I said, "How many years you think I've been in East Brunswick?" So, 734, so. Somewhere in between. This is very exciting, having students back in here. A little bit of normalcy coming back to us, and we have some resolutions, so. Okay.
You can read it right from here.
Okay. That's what I was told to do. So, a resolution of commendation for the 2021 New Jersey Individualist State Champion in Gymnastics. Moved that the Board of Education approved the following resolution: Whereas with motivation and determination, led one East Brunswick High School senior, Karina Muniz, to an amazing gymnastic season; and whereas Karina achieved All-Around GMC Champion, All-Around Sectional Champion; and whereas Karina was a state champion on vault with a score of 9.825; state champion on bars with a score of 9.7; state champion on the floor with a score of 9.85; and state all-around champion with a score of 38.225, which is a new NJSIAA state floor record held by Karina Muniz; and whereas this accomplishment, a tribute to the dedication and commitment of this athlete, has brought local and state recognition to her school, the district, and to the community. Now therefore being resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes and commends East Brunswick High School senior Karina Muniz and her coaches Nadine Murray and Melissa Kaplow for this outstanding achievement. So, move. All right, Mrs. Becker, seconded by Mr. Hong. Any discussion?
And then we'll go up front. We'll do the rest up front.
The rest up front, okay.
Give out the awards.
Oh, okay. What discussion first?
Discussion.
Mrs. Becker.
I can't even begin to imagine the sacrifice and self-control and discipline that one has to do to achieve this honor. I am in awe of you, what you have accomplished, and the entire team. Your dedication, you probably started this when you were just a little child, and over the years have kept with it. Your parents, your families have provided incredible support. What you have achieved is so wonderful, and not just because you won something, but because you demonstrated incredible sportsmanship and represented East Brunswick with such grace and class, and because of the better women that you have become and will carry this experience forever. You're just incredible women. Thank you for being incredible. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Karina.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Nadine Murray? Thanks, so. Hello, good.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Karen got the way.
I know, right?
Look at Jeff.
Moved that this is our 2021 New Jersey State Champions Gymnastics. Moved that the Board of Education approved the following resolution: Whereas with motivation, determination, and exemplary team sportsmanship, led the East Brunswick High School varsity gymnastics team to an awesome season, Red Division Champions, GMC Champions, GMC Spirit Award, Sectional Champion, State Champion; and whereas at the state finals, the team scored a team total of 111.725 to earn the title of 2021 NJSIAA Gymnastics Team Champions; and whereas this accomplishment, a tribute to the dedication and commitment of these student athletes, has brought local and state recognition to their school, the district, and to the community. Now therefore being resolved that the Board of Education recognizes and commends East Brunswick High School gymnast team members with Ilores Leger Cochrane.
Big Scott.
Yeah, right?
Angelique Carterucci.
Point of order?
Mrs. Lacks.
Yes.
Take your discussion and then vote.
Okay, my apologies. May I have a motion? Motion by Mrs. Becker, seconded by Mr. Hong. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Angelique Carterucci. Kadita Das. Mia Fleming.
Congratulations.
Jenna Kozado. Brooke Lar. Danielle Liederman. Abigail Lyon. Mia Malta. Congratulations. Sasha Marszynek. Ariana McSweeney. Catherine McSweeney. Karina Muniz. Anna Tischhauser. Gianna Wickowski. Sydney Yu. And coaches Nadine Murray and Melissa Kaplow. Coaches, we can't forget our coaches, yeah?
Oops. I'm gonna get right here, then.
Yeah, sure.
I'll go, I'll go between. Yeah.
Congratulations, ladies.
Would you take this? Thank you.
Yep.
Our last reservation, recently. A resolution of commendation for our 2022 NJMEA All-State Symphonic Band. Moved that the Board of Education approved the following resolution: Whereas following a rigorous audition process, two East Brunswick Public School students, Aaron Wong and Sean Lee, was among the top student musicians from throughout New Jersey, selected to participate in the 2022 NJMEA All-State Symphonic Band. And whereas this selection requires a commitment on behalf of the students that resulted in many hours of intensive practice, and they successfully auditioned into the top ensemble for the state, and this achievement culminates in a performance for the All-State Symphonic Band at the New Jersey Performing Arts Center. And whereas this honor, a tribute to the students' talent, hard work, and dedication, has brought local and state recognition to our schools, the district, and to the community. Now therefore being resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes and commends Aaron Wong and Sean Lee and their teacher-director, Brian Toth, Mark Perez, and Tatiana Louie Jacques.
Someone. All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, have a good evening. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, so much.
Congratulations.
But congratulations, thank you very much.
Are we both moving?
I'll go side to side. How's that? Congratulations, everyone. Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Moved that the East Brunswick, oh, I'm sorry, 2022 NJMEA All-State Wind Ensemble. Moved that the Board of Education approved the following resolution: Whereas following a rigorous audition process, one Churchill High School student, Isabella Francisco, was among the top student musicians from throughout New Jersey, selected to participate in the 2022 NJMEA All-State Wind Ensemble. And whereas this election requires a commitment on behalf of the student that resulted in many hours of intensive practice, and they successfully auditioned into the top ensemble for the state, and this achievement culminates in a performance for the All-State Wind Ensemble at the New Jersey Performing Arts Center. And whereas this honor, a tribute to the students' talent, hard work, and dedication, has brought local and state recognition to our schools, the district, and to the community. Now therefore being resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes and commends Isabella Francisco and her teachers-directors, Mary O'Mara and Sarah Francino.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moved to pass, congratulations. Oh, there he is. Come on, come on up here.
Me?
Yeah, come on. I'm gonna hug you while I do this. Okay, this is all important, but this one I'm going to, I get to hug him because he hugs me. So, whereas since its inception in 1993, the East Brunswick Education Foundation, the foundation, has funded 1,599 grants, totaling over 2.6 million in funding for technology, equipment, cultural programs, authors' visits, school-wide cross-curricular learning events, hands-on material, many books, and much more to complement teaching and learning throughout the district. And whereas from July 2021 to March 2022, the foundation has awarded 32 grants amounting to $68,000 towards its ongoing mission to enhance and enrich the curriculum for students attending the East Brunswick Public Schools. And whereas at its annual Partners in Excellence Dinner on April 5th, 2022, the foundation will celebrate this year's honorees, Dr. Trudy A. Atkins, Dr. Anna Braun, Lisa Citron, and David P. Lonsky Esquire, as well as the induction of Dr. Scott Gottlieb and Sam Mattis into the Alumni Hall of Fame. Now therefore being resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education expresses its appreciation for the foundation and its support for the generous and continuing commitment toward excellence in education. And being further resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes and applauds the 2022 Partners in Excellence honorees and Alumni Hall of Fame aductees on having been selected by the foundation this year. Nice question. Moved by Mr. Hong, seconded by Mr. Corangelo. Any discussion? Mr. Hong. Do you want to come up, Jack?
Yeah, I see. So, Jack, I want to thank you for your fabulous job. Among almost 600 school districts, only East Brunswick Public School has such a wonderful education foundation. Your guys' job is an amazing addition to our school budget, which provides a lot of help to our teachers who is willing to acquire the new ideas, which is not sponsored by our school budget. Thank you very much, Jack. Keep doing a good job. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
A close? I don't think so. Come take a picture. I don't think we could thank you enough for all that you do.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, so, we're gonna have a quick, three-minute recess so that our students can get back, because I'm sure there's studying to be done. Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, Nora. I apologize. I thought that was in the other.
Yes, but let's move it.
You wanna move it up? Nora, my friend, would you like to speak to your classmates? Tell them what's going on?
All right, so, we have our NHS Student-Faculty Basketball Game, was supposed to be on the 7th. It's not the 7th, sorry, the 24th. It's been moved to March 10th at 7:00 p.m. That is a fundraiser to finance our Relay for Life, which is a big fundraiser, and all the proceeds of that go towards cancer research and donations for that. It's a very wonderful event that we should all attend. Spring sports are starting up. Winter sports are finishing this week. They're all done now. And we have tryouts starting, I believe, Monday, are the first sessions. As Dr. Lonsky mentioned, we have Little Women being performed. Not gonna repeat the dates, but they do an amazing job. I went to the last play, it was fantastic. It's very worth your time. A mock trial won their county competitions, and today they had their regional competition virtually in school. We have our Spring Spirit Week upcoming at the end of this month. Juniors have state testing in the middle and end of this month. And we have parent-teacher conferences coming up in a couple weeks. And that's all I have for you today.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And with that, I will recess for three minutes. Get home safely. Anyone that would like to stay, you are more than welcome to. We have a few budget presentations, because tis the season. So, Mr. Giuliani.
So, yes, good evening, everyone. We are continuing our presentations on the 2022-2023 School District Budget. This evening, we will start with Dr. Joyce Bowley talking about academics.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Ooh, sorry about that. Happy to present the Department of Academic's budget this evening. So, this budget incorporates the content, curricular areas, arts, education, science, social studies, mathematics, language arts, engineering, business, computers, and consumer science, and word languages. This budget also covers some special programs, such as alternate programs, professional learning evaluation and assessment, curriculum and student achievement, home instruction, the Flex Program, English Language Learners, and response to intervention. Some of the professional development, some of the scope of the offerings cover everything from non-violence crisis intervention training, our work with Columbia Teachers College, defensive driving courses for our bus drivers, and playground safety training for some of our facilities, maintenance crew. And we know how hard our teachers work every day to ensure that our students have mastered 21st century skills and are both college and career-ready. And we believe that supporting them is utmost important, and we feel that this budget does that. It's providing instructional materials. It's providing ed-tech resources and the professional development that our teachers need to be successful. And this last slide is just the percentage of the different subcomponents and how much is being spent in each area. Are there any questions?
Could you read it? It's supposed to be just a little small.
Do you have it? Did they get a copy?
We have a copy of that?
Mm-hmm.
Awesome, thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Bowley?
I have.
You have a question?
Sorry for that question.
No, it's okay.
I didn't see it, I was gonna call the papers. So, just looking over the budget, thank you for all your work. I mean, so detailed, and I agree with you 1,000% about the budget. about the professional development and supporting our teachers and so forth. Under the other budget request not approved, so some of that stuff is related to the TCU's.
Yes.
So, how does that work? Like, are we waiting for funding on that?
That'll be funded in consultation with Mr. Juliana.
Yes. We have alternate sources for that, so we'll be dealing with that separately. It will not impact the budget.
Oh, won't impact the budget?
Correct.
Okay, is that federal funds or is that?
A combination of funds that we had available in the current year toward the TCU's and making the TCU's ready.
Excellent, because a lot of it was very important.
Yeah, absolutely.
For the TCU's, like different classroom materials and things like that. Okay, great. Now, it's wonderful. And I just also wanted to mention something that I guess parents who have kids who are going driving, you know, don't realize, and I'm thankful for to the district, is that we have the driving courses here at the high school. And because of COVID, a lot of kids in other schools who didn't have the course here are scrambling. And it's already, I have been talking to our president, Lori. It's already rough, right? She went through her own series of things here. But it would have been worse if the high school and the academics department did not provide that course because it's the first step. If you get those thirty hours, if you don't get it, then you're scrambling through the DMV to try it again. I know people were, even private schools, who have not been able to get their licenses. So, even something like that makes a big difference for the kids coming after COVID to handle these things. So, thank you.
Mr. Hong?
Yes, Dr. Bowley, you listed two budgets for the new math program. The first one is the one-time cost is a little bit of one hundred twenty-two thousand. And the second one is the annual cost for sixty-three thousand seven hundred. So, would you please elaborate what this budget is for? And especially the first one is to cover entire school district for this new math program?
The new math program will be for our students in K through six, so that's half of our student population in the district. There is an implementation cost to onboard the product, and then there is the annual maintenance. We are paying annually for our current math program, and this piece here is substantially cheaper than that.
Okay, thank you. So, another budget you listed is the mentoring fee, one thousand dollars. It's for the support of district administrative employee. Do you have similar budget for the new teachers?
Yes.
When they're coming to the school district?
Yes, we do. We do. What pages are you referencing?
Thirty-one of sixty.
Thirty-one. Mentoring fees, yes. Uh-huh, that's correct. That is incorporating the teachers and administration.
Okay, so, since I believe our senior teachers are really, really a treasure to our school district.
Absolutely.
When the new teachers come in, so we should take advantage of this old senior teachers' experience and take those new teachers and help them to get back to, get onto the job quickly. So, we should sponsor more. Spend more resources on this one. We will end up getting a lot to help young teachers and young administrators.
Yes, and just so you're aware, Mr. Hong, we do have a several-day, if not a whole week, onboarding for our new staff in the summer, the last week of the summer, a new staff orientation. And we have monthly mentoring meetings after school with all of the new staff. And they're also partnered up with a mentor and their buddy. And they meet regularly during the school day.
So, you may need more than one thousand dollars. My point is, so you only got one thousand dollars in your budget. It's too small compared with the number of teachers and employees in this school district. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Dr. Bowley? No?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And following Dr. Bowley now, we have Joyce Forsberg, our manager of transportation, to review the Transportation Department's budget for next year.
Learn how to work the thing. If you would, please, that would be great. I don't operate stuff like that. Good evening. First and foremost, I'm like, buses are my style. I would like to introduce our Transportation Coordinator, who we had discussed the position and put it into our budget. Lori Howell, we introduced this year to the Transportation Department. So, she's been a fantastic asset to the department. Couldn't ask for anybody better. So, I'd like to go over the transportation budget tonight. As you know, transportation is a policy-driven, service-oriented department. We provide the safe, reliable, and efficient transportation for students to and from school, school-related activities, and field trips, and other areas that we need to transport students. We promote student transportation as a frontline support service for the instructional program by delivering students safely, on time, and in a frame of mind, ready to learn. For our department, the benefits of in-house services, you have bus driver stability. That's been a great asset this year because a lot of our bus drivers have been here for a couple of years now and up to thirteen, fourteen years here. So, in-house stability is a fantastic asset because it keeps everybody working. Student familiarity. The students become familiar with our bus drivers. They know that they can go to them, talk to them. Whatever they need, they can ask the bus driver. We increase the parent confidence and comfort level. We receive numerous phone calls, as you're aware, of how parents compliment our drivers and how everybody wants our drivers to be driving their students to school. Improve student behavior. We do have very low discipline problems on our in-district buses. And reduction in HIBs. Haven't heard of any this year yet from our buses, so. Knock on wood. Knock on wood. Okay, our budget supports transportation services for over six thousand six hundred and fifty students. We provide Aiden-Lu transportation services. We also operate the fleet vehicle operations for the buses, maintenance, and repair. We have a fleet of forty-two school buses, twenty-eight facilities management vehicles, and a security vehicle. Our budget also supports the mandatory bus driver drug testing that they must go through and our bus driver uniforms. As you can see in this chart, this is an example of pie chart of how it breaks out for the students that we transport. The biggest portion of the chart is fifty-one percent is regular transportation needs, which is for the K through twelve grades in the school. Thirty-eight percent of it is due to hazardous conditions. We also have five percent of it is for special transportation, and then three percent goes to non-public Aiden-Lu and also for charter schools. Next slide, please. Okay. This slide represents our budget and how it is broken out to the cost of all the different transportations for the students. The largest portion of our budget supports the special needs busing for grades kindergarten through twelve. Second largest portion is thirty-one percent is for regular busing to and from school. And then, as you see, each of the other subject areas, non-public charter, breaks down even further. And it also gives us three percent and four percent for, you know, the smaller items like after-school busing, the fuel, maintenance on the vehicles. So, that's our presentation for tonight. Does anybody have any questions?
I'm sorry, I just have. Okay. So, we have a bus fleet of forty-two buses.
Correct.
But on page fourteen of twenty-two, you listed forty-one bus radio maintenance. Where is another bus?
It's listed this way?
So, on the page fourteen of twenty-two, so you listed a bus radio maintenance. It's for forty-one, now for forty-two. So, where is another bus?
I would say that's a typo, Mr. Hong.
Okay.
Thank you. That's a good saying.
Second question. You didn't list any liability coverage. Was the bus covered by different departments or by the school district?
The insurance. The insurance on the fleet is covered by the school bus from the district.
So, the insurance coverages are not handled at the individual manager levels? That's all insurance coverage is handled by my office? So, that is within my budget. It wouldn't be in transportation.
Okay, thank you for clarification.
Good question, though.
Okay. So, you listed the benefit of in-house bus fleet.
Yes.
Do you have any budget or any future plan to increase your fleet, to add new buses?
To get new buses? Usually what we do is we have, we are on an eight-year recycle for buses. So, every year, we usually order between five and six buses, depending on the cost of the buses, of course. In the future, depending on the growth of the district, it's all gonna depend on how it financially balances out. Okay, so whether or not it's gonna be more cost-effective to increase our fleet by a few buses or whether it's gonna be more cost-effective to go out to contracted services.
And Mr. Hong, allow me to elaborate a little further on that. It is something that we have discussed, and we do look at that pretty regularly. One of the issues that we will have to face as we look to further expand our fleet, and that is where to house them. We're almost maximized in terms of the available bus slots at our Support Operations Facility. So, we would have to also plan for what site we would utilize to add to our fleet.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Yes, Suzanne and Barbara.
I know in the past, there was this, the issue of like, not enough contracted buses and the price being, you know, very high or not getting enough bids. So, when you look at the cost that is in here, is that based on what we projected to be, based on availability? Like, do we see that constraint to be a problem next year? Or you think we're gonna be able to get the services we need with the contracted busing?
It's, here again, it's hard to predict the future with the industry right now. Right now, the constraints still may be there. We have faced challenges this year, without a doubt, okay? We've managed to cover a good portion of our responsibilities on transporting the students to and from school. So, it's, here again, it's all gonna be depending on if the workforce decides to come back to work.
Yeah, yeah. So, right now, we're okay. You know, we'd hate for you to have to get on the bus and start driving.
I've already done that. We're out there. We're actually, actually Lori and I have been out almost every day. One of us is out on the bus. Okay, because we do face a shortage now. But here again, with the, with our in-house drivers and the availability of myself and Lori driving, and we also have a secretary that goes out in AIDS before her hours because we're short AIDS also. So, it's been a challenge, but we've met that challenge, and we try to exceed it. We've had our struggles a couple of days during the school year. And, you know, sometimes we do have to double back for a route. We just had to do it last week. But we try to, we try to break it up so it's not the same people every time. And it all depends on the call-outs and everything. So, today actually was a very good day where a lot of our drivers and a lot of the contractor drivers were actually back from, you know, family crises or family health issues. So, hopefully, it's a good swing up.
Let's hope next year is, you know, not gonna be.
That's challenging.
Another difficult year. But thank you. Thank you for what you do. I know you're very dedicated and, you know, you put your heart into it. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
First, thank you again for everything you do. This is an unprecedented couple of years. It's, and all that you and your staff does is amazing. There are many districts that don't have any buses. They have to turn to the National Guard or things like that. So, thank you for what you're doing. Just budget-wise, just a couple of questions. We're paying for after-school activities busing, like you said here, around three hundred twenty-seven thousand. I know we have sometimes trouble that they don't show up. Do we still pay them? What do we do?
Okay, no, the routes, the buses that haven't showed up, no, we do not pay them for those routes, okay? The high school is where we've had a difficult factor because we've had, it started out as one late bus where we couldn't provide, and it's up to two. So, we do not pay for those routes, just like Churchill. Churchill, though, we've covered all the routes with three buses. And so, when they have the availability of more, they put out more. But here again, they've been provided late buses for the six buses, in essence. So, but no, we're very cautious on the days. And even the days that we cover their routes, we watch, and we take that off of their bill also.
And if I may add, we also have penalties built into our specifications. But, you know, the penalties don't make up for the need to have to transport students. Right, right. So, we would much rather have the services being provided day-to-day on a reliable basis.
We just don't have the folks for it, right?
Everyone is having the same problems in terms of availability of drivers. It is not only a local, it's a, not only statewide, but it is a national issue.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
If I could, one thing I think is very evident tonight with the students that were here getting awards. As we have returned, our students have also returned and are very successful in a number of arenas. They've been returning to after-school activities. They've been very successful in athletics. And all of those events require additional transportation. So, it's not just our normal deliver the students to school, take them home after school. There are things that are going on in the evening and alternate days and competitions. And so, the demands on the department have been extreme. And I applaud Joyce and her entire team. And I kinda snickered when she passed the clicker to Joyce and said, "I really don't do this." But I watched Joyce reassemble a roof hatch on a bus.
Yes, she did. That's why I said, that's not my thing. The buses are my thing.
As long as you can do that, I'm good without that.
I can just about fix a lot of things on the bus. So, but, you know, I have to curtail my mechanic skills.
So, the other, the second question was, and this may be the same answer like last time, the unfunded budget requests where it was, you know, for additional busing for Churchill with the TCU's. That will be covered, or that might be a Bernie question? I'm not sure.
So, we're still working through the budget process. And I'm not quite sure that that amount is going to be necessary at this point in time. We'll be resolving any of these open issues before tentative budget time, though.
Oh, I see there's a projected increase in the law.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
With the fuel costs rising, any movement towards electric buses?
We have applied for grants for the past three, four years. Ever since the pilot program started for electric buses, we have put in and actually applied for grants in order to get the electric buses. A lot of the electric buses that are being awarded on the grants right now are going to the lower-income districts. So, in order for us, again, I mean, it's gonna be a while, but we still apply for them because we are hoping that we do receive the electric buses.
And I can tell you that there is a grant that, I'm looking for it right now. But at any rate, there is a grant program that is open. We are working on submitting another application. Every time a grant program opens, we've been submitting virtually the same application repeatedly because we have the infrastructure. You know, it just amazes me why we can't be awarded a grant because we already have the infrastructure in place at the Support Operations Facility.
Can you explain that a little bit? Because when I was on, at the committee meeting, it blew me away that you prepared ten years in advance, it seems.
Absolutely. When we initially renovated the site where our fleet is housed, one of the things that we did was we incorporated all of the underground infrastructure, the conduit, to run all of the wiring necessary to have charging stations. It's a matter of just pulling the wires and putting the charging stations in place. We're ready to roll. We've been ready to roll for as long as that site has been open, which is not quite ten years, but it's starting to push that. So, we are, I think, I'd say, one of the only, if not the only district in the state that has been. has been prepped in that way. But it amazes me that we can't, and we've not been successful in obtaining an approval on a grant for, I think we've applied for five buses. I'm trying to recall what the numbers were. I think five electric buses is what we've applied for, and just not been successful. They've been going to the, or to the urban districts.
Philadelphia was just granted a huge amount of money for electrification of buses, and they're going to launch a new fleet of electric buses. But because they're a large urban area, serving a large population of students, they got, they got that funding, but we keep trying and.
We appreciate that you do try.
But I think, I think we'll see in the next fifteen years, the gravitation of bus manufacturers moving to electrification. I think combustion engine for buses is probably going to be something of an anomaly fifteen years from now because the technology's getting better, the battery capacity's better, the charging's getting better. So once that cost starts to come down and get closer to what we pay for a diesel bus now, I think that's, that's where they're going to convert.
Because the cost of fuel here, you know, over $200,000, so.
Yeah, and if you just, I don't know if anybody saw on the news, I think Ford just converted their entire business structure into an electrification side and a combustion engine side, so the future of electrification is certainly here.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
No. You don't. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You're to bring it home.
Thanks, Joyce.
So wrapping up for tonight's budget presentations, we have two more opportunities, March seventeenth, and then again on March twenty-eighth. That's a newly scheduled meeting that will be a special meeting. That will be the same evening that a tentative budget will be adopted by the board. As I, I believe I reported this at the last meeting, but the governor's budget address has been moved to March eighth, so as a result, that has had an impact upon our budget schedule. State aid will be, is anticipated to be released on March tenth, and then, as I said, tentative budget adoption will be on the twenty-eighth, and then after that, the next two items will be the public hearing on May fifth, followed by the final budget adoption on May twelfth. And that's it for the budget for this evening.
Thank you. This brings us, for the good of the cause for the public, the Board of Education recognizes the value of public comments on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school related matters of community interest. To protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. Participation is limited to three minutes duration. Lapse time will be determined through the use of a timing device operated by the board's secretary. Is there anyone this evening that wishes to speak to the board? Okay. Seeing that, I will close the public portion and actually have quite a closed agenda, so I'm going to ask for a motion to move this evening's agenda. Before I do, is there anything that anyone needs separated out?
So moved.
Nothing separate?
Yes, yes.
Nothing major. Under bylaws oh-one-one, we can just have a discussion on that.
We're going to have a discussion, so I just need, if you, you don't need anything separated, that once we move the agenda, I'm going to call for discussion, and you will be the first one I will call to bring it up. How's that?
Thank you.
Okay. So moved by Mr. Hong, seconded by Mrs. Becker. Any discussion? Mr. Winston, kick it off.
Yeah, just, policy changes, I understand. Bylaw changes, I'd just like a little rationale and backing and color behind it. I did read the use of intellectual property, protected property. Talk to me about the process. Talk to me about the whys and why we feel that at this point that's necessary.
I'll kick it off, Mr. Winston, and I'll have Mr. Giuliano weigh in as well. Over the years, we have adopted, utilized a number of logos throughout the district. We've encountered that some of those are already protected or already copyrighted or trademarked. So what we want to do is we want to develop a catalog of logos that are approved by the board and that we can get protected. And that would be the repository, basically the book of logos, to be passed on from administration and board, on and on and on. And that would give us consistency for our booster clubs when we have to revitalize our facilities or fields, and it would ensure the district and this board and future boards that whatever we're using is protected and owned by the district, and we're not infringing on somebody else's intellectual property.
I appreciate the input. Thank you.
No other discussion? I do want to make sure you understand, the discussion is on this and the update that you should find at your seats, so. If there's no other discussion, will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Carangelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes. Sorry.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
And President Lax.
Yes. Okay, so we are up to new and our old business, our committee reports, information items, and for the good of the cause for the board. Okay, so I will start then.
No, go ahead. You start.
I will start and just say that Read Across America is my favorite time of year, and even though seven hundred is a little bit older than I was going for that look, I really did enjoy myself. I also, actually, because I happened to be reading in Central, caught a little bit of Reggie's class, and I have to say, I have to share a quote with you all. So he said to these kids, it was great how he was. He talked about their ability to communicate with each other and all this. It went beyond just, hey, don't do drugs. It was really pretty impressive. But he said to these kids today, he said, "Bad company corrupts good character." It was something his grandmother. So from Reggie's grandmother, I just thought that was a really neat thing, so I just wanted to share that with all of you because I love the fact that he was really teaching these kids, you know, how to get along, how to communicate, positive versus negative, and so that just really stuck with me, so.
I just was going to read, you said Read Across America. It was really wonderful, be back in the schools and to see the kids and to see the teachers and the principals, and it was just, they really ran a beautiful event and made us feel very welcome, and thank you for having us.
Thanks for being there.
Yeah, I have two things. One, on the Read Across America, this is the first time I did it. I will be submitting an application and become the second grade reading teacher, so, you know, I just had the greatest time reading about two bad ants. And they were bad. And they, they shouldn't have left the group. That's what, that was our takeaway. So that's very bad. And the second item, yeah, I'm honored to say, I'll talk about a gentleman who does have district attachments. A guy who listed in the Army during his junior year in nineteen forty-five, entered basic training, missing his senior year, received a diploma as a result of his service. Nineteen fifty-seven, began in East Brunswick as an educator, opened up the high school. After several years, he went off to Freehold where he taught for thirty-one years, introduced a Holocaust curriculum for the first time, and fought hard to get it in a not-so-friendly Freehold district in the mid-seventies. And loved education, taught, did an incredible thing, and last Sunday, my dad died, so. Thank you for hearing me.
Our condolences, Jeff.
Thank you.
Mrs. Becker.
Yeah, Jeff, my condolences, but.
He's a great guy. He's in Victor's office, in the yearbook, in the yearbook, teaching yearbook right now, so. He's a good guy. Ninety-three, great life, great life.
I have something else, too.
Yes.
Regarding the softball field and uniforms, any movement on those? I noticed a little bleacher there, so anything change?
We are working diligently on addressing the issues that were addressed to the board about the softball fields and about the uniforms. Yes.
Mrs. Chu.
I just wanted to share that I had the chance to attend the Churchill Junior High School Drama Club's Alice in Wonderland last weekend, and it was just so cute. So anytime you get a chance to go out and see the kids and the talent they display, just so great to see the kids out again and performing and how energetic their advisors were. I think everybody just had a great time. They had to bring out more chairs. I got there and there were a few, you know, there was a setup for the chairs, and they're doing it in the cafeteria. They're not set, and they had to bring out more chairs. There were so many people, so it was, it was just wonderful to see, and I want to congratulate them on a wonderful performance. And I had a chance to chat with Matt Hannis, who was also there with his family. It was just, just a wonderful evening, so congratulations to all of them.
People truly are coming back out again.
Yeah.
I mean, in very big ways.
Yes, they really are. It's nice to see.
I was just going to add on to that. I had the opportunity to be at Churchill during the parent orientations, and it was, I was just dropping off for sources of strength for tour guide, and I was almost emotional to see the parking lot so full and so many people streaming out of, in and out of the buildings. It had been so long since I had seen the place just overflowing with people and people gathering outside and laughing and not leaving quickly. It was just really, I had forgotten how long it had been since the buildings were full. And I also want to say, I'm doing Read Across America tomorrow, and I'm a little afraid about how old I'm going to be.
No, well, I will tell you. I did, I did start it with, you guys will be really surprised how many years I have lived in East Brunswick. So I did start it, since I grew up here.
I need to not say that.
And I did read Patricia Palacko's Babushka Baba Yaga, and so she being old, so I did kind of guide them down the path of, I'm very, very old, but yes. But the thirty-four, I like that one better. The seven hundred, at least, you know, it's better. At least I didn't say, like, you know, seventy-five. You know, seven hundred I can take, so.
You're mortal.
Yes, absolutely.
I would like Mr. Hannis to introduce tonight to the board and to the public our newest administrator, who you approved tonight.
First, I'd like to begin by saying thank you, Ms. Chu, and thank you, Ms. Gwass, for the kind words. We were very fortunate to have the opportunity and for all the members of the administration who were there at our parent orientations. It was a great opportunity to meet the parents and guardians of our rising seventh graders who will be at Churchill next year and our rising eighth graders who are currently in seventh grade, and the drama productions that we had last week were really great, so thank you for those kind words. So here this evening, Mr. Luca, who's been the instructional coach and a math teacher at Churchill Junior High School, is now going to be coming on board as a new member of our administrative team at Churchill. We're very excited to have her there. She has an excellent instructional knowledge. She's been our instructional coach and helped us through the pandemic when we came back to in-person learning last year with the rollout of our one-to-one device initiative, the rollout of Canvas, supporting teachers in the classrooms, and through her administrative internship, many tasks such as supporting NJSLA testing, the Start Strong that we had this fall, as well as building our master schedule, coming into a new block schedule format. So we're very excited to bring her on board. She can be an excellent resource to our staff, and thank you for your support.
Welcome to this roll. You're no stranger to us.
Yes, yes.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to formally introduce myself. My name is Alexia DeLuca, and like Mr. Hannis said with my introduction, I have been with the district and very, very proud member, and part of the reason is because of the support from the Board of Ed. So thank you, and I look forward to working with you and having all of our students succeed.
Thank you both.
Thank you. Good luck to you. She made math fun years and years and years ago when I went to my, one of my first back-to-school nights. Challenging, but fun, so thank you. Is there anything else from the board? No. Well, then, whereas the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in a public meeting, and these subjects are within the exception of the Open Public Meetings Act, and whereas the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows, those items listed on tonight's agenda. The length of closed session is estimated to be one hour, after which the public meeting of the board shall reconvene and action may be taken. Can I please have a motion to go into closed? Moved by Mr. Winston, seconded by Mrs. Becker. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Okay, we are closed. Thank you and good night.
Lou?
I don't need your choice. I would like to get a motion for the district, do I read this, sorry? For the district to enter to contract with Abm. Creative LLC.
So moved.
Second. Mrs. Gwass, Mr. Carangelo, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Repose? Nope, motion carries. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
That motion by Jeff, seconded by Vicki. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any pose? Good night. Again.
Thanks, everyone.